Big.
Fifth time. Close.
Is it?
I mean.
It.
It. Like.
How many is Kate? This is.
We have a whole crew, as you guys have seen. Um, Mrs. Key and Mrs. Blue are here representing Unified Athletics from Madison Grant. They help us upgrade all the way into the junior high. And what's recently did the Unified Robotics again for multiple times, multiple years now. They make a elementary program and a junior high program. So they represented for that, but also for students of their track. And then they also do that study of the history school day. We said, not leaving today. Like all of what they've done together to build inclusive practices. And donate to Special Olympics and have been given a huge honor that I'd ask that Special Olympics was here to present to us today. Of course, we got to see it and tell you a little bit about what that.
I'm really, my cast from Special Olympics Indiana. On behalf of Special Olympics Indiana and Special Olympics North America. A park elementary is one of five Indiana schools this year. Second elementary only in the past ten years that has earned this national banner by achieving ten components comprised of cultural engagement, inclusive student leadership, and unified sports. So they have earned what we call the national banner. And it is renewable every four years. There are only twenty-eight schools in the state of Indiana who have earned this banner.
Wow. Uh.
Get their whole banner, please.
Yes, that's a big deal, guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys can actually come in here.
Yeah.
I'm on it.
There's the bird in. Um. And be some of the things satisfying, they would activate and they do, that'd be great. Oh, no. Um.
Well, I.
Where do you want me to?
Yeah, just trying to get pictures.
Yeah.
Oh, come on, Mike in it, doesn't he? Isn't the guy Mike, should he be in it?
In there.
The asking.
Yeah.
For the tight shot. I just want to slide in there and I'll take your picture. Slide in there and I'll take. Yeah, I can get some. Oh, no, oh, I'm in there.
You don't need to deal with it.
Slide in there. Get the cam. Savannah.
Looking good in there.
Don't move. Very nice. That a girl.
He gonna go sleep. Life's good.
That is something else, the second elementary in the last, they said the second elementary in the last ten.
Thank you so much.
And our parents here have been attached supporters, including the street and. Here that have brought their students who are peers and students who are participants. And they all participate together and it's really awesome. Only for like one community support program in support of lots of different things.
Which one did you guys enjoy the most?
What event did you do?
Robotics.
Robotics.
You're robotic in that room. They expected to be about like this and it's the kid. But there. A lot of. But it was. But up there, she was running and they all did great. Did it great, didn't you? Why do you say they like?
Oh.
That's called knowledge. But it is something that they do through studies and consider to. Whole school. Did you get a break?
Nice. So what I'm saying, I've heard basketball, robotics, crap.
Buddies.
Yeah.
We actually found out yesterday that I go to the council administrator's special education. They had two conferences a year and they were looking for representatives and I courage. The sister to submit a proposal for her and the city about using. Team education in rooms with emotional disabilities and then you. And that is. You know, in. We'll be seeing. And they were thousand two percent this spring.
Oh.
So I think that.
All right, good stuff.
And I believe in collective bargaining this year, we built in ECA stipends for best buddies. So prior, prior to this year, the two of them had taken it on on their own and uh just, just out of love. Um, but we were able to add that into our ECAs within the master contract this year as well to at least compensate them a little bit for their efforts. So.
We got big questions. Where are you gonna? Where are you gonna hang that banner?
What do you think, kids?
Where are you, where are you gonna? Where's hanging the banner?
Can't take it home.
Require a lot of balls.
Hopefully.
Maybe in that gym. Lunchroom, gym, I don't know.
Cafeteria.
Yeah, cafeteria, maybe.
Alright. Good stuff. Good look. Good stuff.
For everyone to see.
Pleasure. We're excited what happens up here in the last.
We. High school workshop.
So we have six hundred and sixty-five schools that participated last year. Uh, we had five schools that opened here on the campus. With this past three, only five schools. Elementary, here the only elementary, but the second overall. The middle school for the first time. Uh, a high school for the first time. Two other high schools that were renewed, which uh they stay originally from twenty nineteen. Um. And then. Uh. Twenty-eight. Overall schools have earned this over the past. It's actually, we're very selective on who we allow to. Because we want to be involved at least three years, spend a month. Uh, because it goes, you submit the application, which is very daunting. Um, I go through it and I add my thanks to it. There's, there were some things this to help the committee. And there's a national committee now that reads through them and selects them. And we had one school that got kicked out. One of our six schools is submitted in five. Eight.
That's great.
We appreciate you guys for what you do and. And appreciate I convinced from ECA stipend. Because that is a ongoing question in Unified Coaches Association with schools and high schools especially. And teachers giving their love time to when in schools are now starting to recognize that it's equal to other clubs and other schools. Just as important. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys.
Thank you so much.
Would like to sit in one of the big chairs and become part of our class.
Have mine.
Thank you.
This dog. Yes.
Just end it.
What's your bill, Jerry?
Stanley on the.
Prove both of them. Three, two, six. I'll go. Nineteen six. Four. Three. But.
Thank you. Fair.
Yes. Yep. Prove. Yeah. Will stay. That's true. Well. And. That. Well. You know. Is that? It. It. Well. That's.
And like. I mean. Okay.
And jump the good.
I'm a tech. Hey, guys.
Yeah. Great rate. He. He's. He's. He's proof.
What?
Uh. Yes. But I think.
Seventy thousand.
Not, not seventy thousand.
Was the.
Yeah. Yeah, I did. Back in the collective bar in M District. To their. That salary thing. Thinking I want. You guys. While we are on that, I will say that that partnership between us and Eastbrook and sharing. Really strong. Uh. I, in my role, extremely thankful for us to have Mrs. birthday as. Uh, the thing is, as we're currently sitting in. I just, the influence of federal dollars in that program and this. Audit it. Um, her expertise, her experience, second to none. And so I, I'm thankful in my seat for. Her. Right? Yeah, it works out well for both of us. The next item approval of fund transfers, you guys have those, that is just some end of year cleanup. Um, what you see there a lot of time, you know, you see some of these. And uh, the negative balance was being reimbursed by the grant. For a lot of our grants, they're only an allocation enough to cover the salary. But what we do is we continue, we can't split, we can't pay their benefits from one fund and their salary from another fund, so we just paid out. That fund runs in the negative and then this is my cleanup of that now. Um, so that is the reason that you see those, but this is just fun cleanup, end of year fun cleanup, trying to zero out some, some older grants. Um, and get us to, to some zero dollar balances.
Next.
Yeah.
Played last week.
Yeah.
Um, and uh, it was, it was. It didn't. But we got.
Yeah, we, we can hit this. Um, first I'll explain the transition team that we put together. Um, it was building level admin, Mr. Board, myself, Mrs. Wybrough. And then we had Mrs. Stanley, um, from the school counselor standpoint. We had Mr. Lyons, sixth grade teacher that's impacted by this. We had Mrs. Caudill from the extracurricular content area. We had Mrs. Sykes, uh, from general education area. And we had uh, Ms. Doughty from special ed. And so we brought that team together and I don't think I forgot anybody. Yeah, Mrs. Duckwall, Mr. Brown. Um, Mr. Redford. Um, so we uh. We brought that transition, transition team together. Um, to really dig in and to identify our why. And why do we desire to transfer sixth grade out here? And so you can go to the next one, Hannah. Maybe scroll or. I don't know. There we go. So we developed that why. And when we announced the meeting for our parents, we included the why. So all of our parents received this in their communication through Parents Square. Of why we were seeking this recommend, or why we were going to bring this recommendation to you guys this evening. And I'm not going to get into each bullet point. Um, I believe that's been attached uh in, in board docs, but. It really kind of the overarching pieces in the why were the age appropriate environment, the curriculum continuity, extracurricular access, specialized staff and resources. Social emotional supports, smooth secondary transition, and then student leadership and identity. And you can see under each of those, we have at least two bullet points, if not three. Um, of why we are bringing this recommendation to you this evening. Go to the. There we go. Uh, so academic and social highlights, uh, the possibilities of extended core instruction, advisory mentoring, peer mentoring program possibilities, uh, scaled electives model. And then uh, some vertical curricular alignment uh here in this building at that middle school age group. One of the things that we heavily emphasized and focused on throughout this process was facility considerations. And I explained to the, to the transition team in sixteen, when I came to Madison Grant, that was the first year we became a seven twelve building. And at that time, the double doors remained closed, seventh and eighth grader stayed on this side, ninth through twelfth stayed on that side. But as our ADM has continued to decline, just naturally, what's happened is now we can't support just a middle school staff and just a high school staff. So we started having teachers, I believe there's only one teacher in this building that is junior high only, I believe. Uh, and so we, we had to slowly open up the doors and allow students to travel back and forth because early on we were asking teachers to travel back and forth. It wasn't pretty well. And so we got to the point where now we operate in seven twelve. Yes. But as I also explained, being the father of a current fifth grader, I understand the. Of us being able to create that middle school feel for the nation. And so as we really dug in and we really looked at this, we had the, we had the blueprint up on the wall, the floor plan up on the wall. And we've sat here and built out a master schedule for the junior, senior high. Um, including our three current sixth grade teachers that would come out. And so we built that master schedule out. We positioned teachers in locations that would create a middle school feel on this north end. Uh, kind of the square, what I'm going to call. And then more of the, more of the high school feel on the south end. And so we really dug into the facility side to make sure to analyze traffic patterns, to know who's teaching what, to know who may be teaching upper level and where are we going to put them. Um, but we feel like we have a master schedule in place right now and a facility plan in place right now. Where we can create that intentional middle school feel for our sixth through eighth graders. And as they progress from sixth through eighth, their progression throughout this entire building also grows. So um, our sixth graders will be contained down here on this end. Uh, seventh grade will continue to uh, be, you know, their, their elective course load may take them to a little bit broader scope in the facility. Where than eighth grade is that step before freshman year and even a little bit more so, but that's where that allows us to scale that out. But I, I do want people to understand that the facility's consideration was our entire afternoon. And as we dug into that, we built a master schedule from a personnel standpoint and from a physical classroom standpoint. So some long-term benefits that we've identified as we invest in student success is just the academic continuity. Some of the resource access, some of the developmental supports, and then secondary preparation. So we feel like those are the long-term benefits of the recommendation that we bring to you tonight to move sixth grade out here to the junior, senior high building beginning in the fall of two thousand twenty-six. I believe that may be the last slide. So with that, um, I do bring the recommendation to you guys this evening, taking approval. Uh, for us to transition our sixth grade out to this building beginning in the fall of two thousand twenty-six, which would then make this building grade six through twelve. And at that time, park would be three through five. Some of it will remain unchanged at this time of pre-K through two.
We. Your questions come in. But pardon me, multiple discussions, this has been talked about for at least thirteen, if not fifteen years.
I, I'm, you know, and as we also explained in, you know, with multiple members of, of the transition team are here this evening. We still have a semester worth of work to do too. Because we need to make this as seamless as possible for our students. Uh, we will be transitioning to grade levels upon your approval, um, simultaneous. Um, but we have.
They've been developed over time.
You know, we'll have to tweak a little bit and we'll have to, to dig in, but uh, our one full day of, of plenty. Emails and some other forms of communication. Uh. It was a diverse group of individuals that I feel represent every part that's impacted by this. Um, including uh, you know, and I shared this with our parents when we met last week too. I think one of the neat things is that those students transition out here with familiar faces as our three sixth grade teachers come with them. And so I think that goes a long ways as well. So. But process is, has just started to get us to this point to bring this recommendation to you guys this evening and then upon your approval. Uh, i- if you guys were to approve it, then we'll continue our work throughout the second semester to, to transition our, our students out here next fall. Okay. Let's jump into November cash flow. And trying to complete cash flow amid reconciliation amidst conversion and, and everything else, but. We've, we've got us at a spot, I will tell you this, that we're still doing some cleanup. So if something were to change from November cash flow, when I present December, I will highlight that and I will, I will make you aware of that. Um, but let's jump into the education fund first. And we started the month of November.
Million. Eighteen thousand. College and seventy six. It's. College. It's been. Up in that. That is a. Where. That's nothing with the country. Over forty-one million. Twelve thousand five hundred. Dollar. Yes. You will notice. Increase. In. Um. Board. Uh.
Even. Now we have a few months of, uh, basically catch.
Because of it, you see that. There. Um.
You know, thankfully. Uh, because I'd much rather be extra money here in the last two months than paying. So, uh, that's the biggest thing there. Uh, and now you can see. A three point one four percent transfer of the up to fifty. Fifteen thousand dollars right now. So as we've continued to, to squeeze this budget here over the last few months, uh, we're starting to see some of the fruits of that lake, um, where we had been tracking red in both. The next two and a half weeks is we. December expenditures will be, uh, because we will distribute retro pay based upon selective bargaining in the month of December, so, uh, salary will be. Hearing some questions on. We received some tax revenue in November. So we received our Grant County tax revenue draw in the month of November.
So we did.
Also some license, uh. Now, as we talked about a lot, debt service, you know, there's, there's a max fund balance that I can have in debt service, and that's based upon the year in which we, we made the debt borrowing. And so one thing that's changed this year, if you look in that C-Bet and that Fit line, the difference from June to what you see in November is that legislation now allows us to place C-Bet and Fit in any fund we so choose. So it doesn't have to go in debt service, but it used to get broken out debt service operations. But now with, with our most recent legislation, we can now place that in any fund. What I've done at this point is I've placed that in our operations fund, which we'll see next. Um, but I figured with a fund that has a max fund balance, that, uh, we will put that money, knowing that we were trying to squeeze this budget here at the end of the year to land in the black, uh, that was definitely a huge assist. And so, uh, if you guys have any questions on debt service, I'll take those, but if not, we can jump to operations and you can see the impact of that. Okay, hearing none, as we turn to operations, we started the month with one million nine hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-one cents. And we did put eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, sixty-two dollars and seventy-four cents in the bank, uh, and spent two hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-five. Two million, six hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars, ninety-five cents. Uh, but you can see up there where I, they won't, I mean, there's, there's fifteen thousand dollars that went into our operations fund by us being able to place that there rather than in debt service. So, right now, where we're looking, um, and we also did receive, that was back in education fund, I missed that, but we did receive summer school reimbursement too, so that was some welcome revenue as well. Um, but you can see now here too, with that five hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer that I have penciled in in the month of December, we're projecting to be in the black in operations by thirteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. So now for the first time, uh, in our two thousand twenty-five cash flow projections, we're projecting in the black here as we, as we attempt to close out the year. Um, you can see also in the month of December, I have some pretty heavy expenditures written into operations. I've got three hundred and ten thousand in supplies and another fifty-five thousand in capital projects. What that will allow us to do is encumber some money, um, based upon some identified needs, and so that's what we'll continue to navigate as well. Um, but that is where that money sits, so you'll see those, those figures there as well. Uh, but what that does is that secures us here to be able to encumber some money on twenty-five as we roll into twenty-six. Uh, and that's the way that I'd like to operate because that allows us some, some guaranteed money rather than us not knowing, you know, if we, if we need to spend some money in June to overhaul ten classrooms worth of furniture, we know that we have that money to do it because we've already allocated it. And so I'd much rather do that than maybe living in the middle of the twenty-six budget and say, yeah, I think I can spend this much money, but I don't know what's going to happen the next six months. So, uh, we're going to live off the twenty-five budget, and as we've done here lately, we're going to build in some, uh, we'll encumber some money here at the end, uh, as, uh, Anne and I had a conversation today. We'll, we'll run another final batch here at the end of next week, and then I'll really sit and start to crunch and see where we are and, and see what things look like. So, the fund transfers you guys approved tonight were already built into this cash flow. So I know there's about twenty thousand dollars worth of fund transfers in the education fund, but that's already been built into this cash flow as well. So we'll, we'll continue to monitor here. It's going to be a busy three weeks, um, but definitely trending up. Um, you have any questions at this point?
How many dollars?
Uh, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. But that's the appropriations we, that, yeah, that's the appropriations that we brought in, yeah. So really, if our budget would have been net zero, if we were projecting a net zero budget this year, we would have spent down the fund balance by the four hundred and thirty-eight thousand on the appropriations that we carried from last year. So the fact that we carry those appropriations and we're still staying in the black speaks volumes. Which gets to some good news here that I'll, I'll recap here at, at the end. Um, rainy day saw no activity. We still have a little over a million dollars in there at a million, seven hundred and forty-six, thirty-six cents. Um, and this is where we get to, and I'm gonna, I gotta, on the back of this. I know we've been grinding this budget and, and some of our fellow colleagues sitting in this room right now are saying, yeah, we have, because they continue to hear from me over and over and over. Um, as we, because it's taken all of us, and, and it's taken sacrifices on everybody's part. Uh, there have been grinds this fall, um, as it relates to personnel and some different things. But I want to tell you guys, as I started thinking of ADM and building cash flow this month, a couple of things stood out to me. Since the fall of two thousand twenty, so five years ago, we are down a hundred and thirty-eight students. Right now, we are receiving eight thousand, fifty dollars and eighty-seven cents per student. Okay, so our basic tu- tuition support, our state tuition support in our education fund in fall of twenty-five, one million, one hundred and eleven thousand, twenty dollars and six cents less, based upon being down a hundred and thirty-eight students. Okay, so we, we navigated that. So, what have we done? You know, we're, we're down that, we're down a hundred and thirty-eight students in five years. And I, Mr. Moore and I chatted a little bit, and I just started thinking, like, what have we done? We've grown programming. We've added an early learning center for our employees. We've increased our fund balance in our four major funds by four point three million dollars. We've riffed no one. We've increased base teacher salary pay by eighty-seven hundred dollars. And all of the minimum two pay increases in that timeframe. So when you think about us losing over a million dollars in state tuition support, and we haven't had to riff a teacher, have we absorbed the t- teachers through attrition? Absolutely. We have, but we haven't taken somebody's job. We've just chosen to absorb it as people have chosen to leave, retire, or whatever. Um, but when you start thinking about the things that we've navigated in the last five years with a declining ADM, and we've increased programming for our students, we've added opportunities for our employees, you know, it, it just, it says a lot to these people that sit in this room because they feel the crunch of it too. And so we all share this together, you guys share this in here, um, but it's taken a physically responsible mindset on all of our parts. And listen, we don't always agree. I don't always agree, you know, with, with what they want to do, and they don't always agree with what I want to do. Um, but collectively at the end, these are the results that those conversations produce. And so I just, you know, we've positioned ourselves in a spot to take Senate enrolled Act one on head-on, um, not allowing it to pull us back, uh, but we'll continue to progress forward as we navigate this, which is much different than most districts right now. And so much of that kudos is to you guys, um, and then much to, to the boots on the ground that, that serve our kids every day, um, as they've all been, uh, strategic, creative, um, taking on a little bit more, uh, but it, but it's been shared across, but when you really think about that, it's, it's pretty neat that, that that's what we've been able to provide, not only our students, but, but our employees as well, so. I know it's been doom and gloom, and I just kind of did a little reflection here as I built cash flow and, and finalized some thoughts today, but wanted to share that.
We'll get those in the minutes.
Your bullet points. Yep, I'll share. You. Okay, so that takes us to construction, if we're good to go to construction update. It's, it's a shared effort, so. Um. For our remaining contract payments to our architect. Okay, so we owe twenty-two hundred dollars worth of contracts. Uh, after the two hundred dollars worth of contracts, leaves us of nine hundred. Having covered a hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars in work that on irrigation, uh, bleachers and finished fencing east of the tennis courts, um, with what was south of the old building has been completed, but east of the tennis court still needs to be completed. But when you take our current balance, you take away what we've encumbered, we are still sitting on a balance of eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and ten dollars in our construction fund. Okay, so again, we will continue to, to gather things. Um, this will lead right into the long-term facility study. Um, they are at a point right now in the long-term facility study where they are putting prices on things so that we have an idea of, hey, this is going to need to be done in two years, and this is an anticipated cost of that. So where I think we will get really aggressive and will formulate a game plan is once we have that facility studied back, um, right now I'm searching to see if I can encumber money out of my operations fund on a TBA, uh, vendor. Um, so then we know what we have in construction fund, we know an encumbrance that we have from the current budget year with money that we know we have today, and then that long-term facility plan to really identify our approach of how we want to attack that. And so that's what I'm looking at right now. Um, the long-term facility study, I'm still hopeful, the first meeting in January, I've been leaning on them. Uh, but they're at that spot right now where they're trying to put some estimated costs to things, so that's where we are in that. Audit update, um, exit conference, January sixth, um, so I, I'll tell you, the State Board of Accounts team that's on site, I think we saw the six different individual today, uh, they have been superb. Uh, audits are just time sucks. There's just no way around it. Anna and Allison are getting pulled in every different direction, and here we're trying to continue normal operations, and we're trying to, uh, trying to work through this conversion, uh, so I can't say enough about their efforts, but I also do want to give credit to our State Board of Accounts team that's here because they've been understanding. Um, they, they understand all those, uh, you know, the lead auditor's mom is an educator. And so they understand the, the varying pressures that we're feeling right now too. Uh, but it's going well, it's just, it's just time consuming. So hopefully right now, exit conference is scheduled for January sixth. Um. Hey, there you go.
Then, I'll go ahead.
Yeah, you hit those.
Sure, we got email this afternoon. We got, uh, and the reason I put this under Mr. Man, uh, because as I can, as we can identify, we were, uh, listed as one of the three schools in the nation that received a distinguished multi-field facility in two thousand twenty-five. That was by the American Sports Builders Association. That is not just with Vernon Jones, that's with every sports builder in the nation is part of this association. That's a, a pretty high acclaim, uh, that, that we received. In addition to that, I didn't know this was a possibility, but with the asphalt, uh, companies, there's a asphalt association. We received a state award that Mr. Man will be going over Thursday and receiving that. But, uh, the reason I put this, I could have put this under mine because I found out about this afternoon, but Mr. Man led this, uh, this, uh, project, and outside of asking me a, a couple of historical questions that I beat my head against tables before, uh, that, that just helped him not save some forehead, I guess. Uh, the things that we run into on these building projects sometimes. So, uh, I, I wanted to include that there because he, he really led that project, and we're, as it turned out really well, we're real appreciative of that, so that's why I kind of sprung out on him.
And, I mean, thank everybody. Brian's had those meetings, our athletic department, you know, they, they grunted, I mean, we're moving people here and there, and they had access to this and didn't have access to that, and um, but I think one of the neat things about this project, a lot of these projects, we hire a general contractor, general contractor hire subs, and they, good project, and they hand it off. Um, but over the course of this project, we had four different contractors. So we had our general contractor, W. Duncan. We had our sports contractor in Vernon Jones. We had Musco Lighting, contracted them separately. And then we also had E and B paving, finished work. And so really to be able to coordinate all four contractors on the backend is much easier than on the frontend. Um, but I can't say enough about the four of them too, and their willingness to work around each other and with each other. Uh, Lancer, uh, and Brian Silva from Lancer did a great job running our construction meetings, uh, and helping to coordinate all those schedules and that, everything else, but, um, I'll tell you, it, it, there, there were long days, and, and there were big days, but I'm proud to be able to provide that facility, immunity for spectators.
How many pairs of shoes did you go through?
I kept old shoes back in the custodian closet that eventually. They could work, sicorin and dress shoes, um, but yeah.
When you go to the parking lot state award, will you be taking notes on what is especially fantastic about our parking lot?
So I had to go to E and B paving over in Kokomo a couple of weeks ago to film this marketing video because this before the awards. So I will report that because I, it, there were different categories as far, and I don't know if it's tonnage of asphalt, or if it's square foot of asphalt, or, or whatever it is.
Appreciate.
Yeah, I will know more on Thursday.
I don't want to, like, what am I missing?
Yeah, because we walk on it, we park on it.
Right. I just don't want to miss out on it.
That's the accepted bid. Last accepted bid.
But yeah, it, but you know, I mean, having Mr. Bo, uh, by my side in that one, you know, with all these projects that he's, he's managed and oversaw in our district, uh, was invaluable as well. So just thankful for that, and then we, we, we had fun with it, and I mean, they were, they were frustrating days, but they were fun days, and, and it's good to have it complete. There it is.
Weather updates. I can't, I can't help but add this to the first single. For in December, more so. Looks pretty fast. We have this many this early for a long time, uh, so we're. And trying to fix, it's going to prove and what they won't. Continues Mr. Man. And wrestling is in full swing now. Want to mention this now, I just, I just got insurance came in today, the price for our premium for our property insurance. That's, uh, uh, something that's been escalating the last few years to, to the point where we're thinking about investigating prices. I sit on that board, and we spend eight hours. To make that cost not go up like it normally has. This year we went a little bit, point, point nine percent is I think, is the rate we went up. I think we, but it turned out to be eleven thousand dollars is what our increase was this year, and when we pay in upwards of the high two hundred for our property and casualty insurance, just under. in upwards of the high two hundred for our property and casualty insurance, just under three hundred thousand dollars, that's a big difference. And, uh, we can't afford to have that keep going up in sixteen, seventeen percent. And so we really worked with them. Uh, there were five people sitting on that board and it was a lot of work. It was, it was not fun. But we found ways, uh, by not even up, upping our deductibles. So, so that was, that was a good day and, and so.
Yes, it's. So, said simply. I haven't been here. High school wrestling since ninety-three. And we have never beaten Felton. We've never even really competed with Felton. So.
I know I saw him, I saw that.
And I think he's filled every weight class, hasn't he?
Saturday they got everywhere. So, you know, the cool part about that, Felton's coach is a Hall of Fame coach already. And he, he consistently has, he's had an Olympian, Alberdin, Colombian. As assistant coach for quite a few years, consistently has a champion. And, and the best part, I didn't get to see the match, but the way I understand it, after the match, their coach was really, really good to our, our coaches and our boys for that and where, where they're at. For a gentleman that's standing in wrestling, faith. That's pretty, that's pretty big. Oh, thank you guys.